Our call to order, the workshop council work session of Wednesday, February 21st, 2024 at 2:00 in KC City Hall Chambers. We're excited for those of you who are even with us in person and those of you who are joining us through our live stream. The press and public have been notified according to the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. I believe Merrick Woodtown James has the information, is he?
Very well, if you will. Dear Father, we just come before you thanking you for this day. Father God, we thank you for our city. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve our mankind and to continue to watch our city enriched, to watch it grow, to watch our future generations just develop right here before our very eyes. And again, Father, we just thank you for that opportunity. And we thank you for those who make it possible. The staff that are present in this room, the leaders of this city, and those men and women who work tirelessly every day. So many things that just go on behind the scenes that we don't recognize that is getting done for the betterment. And we thank you for everything that each of them do. Father, I ask that you would just watch over us today, watch over our families as we are here, guide our conversations. And in the end, it's what you see fit and what is good for our city. In all this, we pray in your precious Son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a comment regarding items on the agenda?
No one signed up, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then we will open our work session. And the first item is the introduction of utility rates study.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. Couple quick housekeeping updates if I can before we get started with our rate study. One, you did mention, Mayor, that we are live streaming. Do you want to remind everybody of that? We are being recorded and our audio is going through these two devices. They are superb, so just talk clear and you don't have to yell. Also, I would ask that we conclude by 4:30 at the latest. We do have a 5:00 regular meeting, so we do need time to set our room in order if we need that time to go until 4:30. All right, without further ado, I do have with us today our bond counsel Lawrence Flynn. He, of course, is with us to introduce our consultants for the rate study. Just as a super brief background, you did authorize and fund that study in this year's budget. Our goal is to have some timely information for you as you consider your FY '25 budget. This has been a major recommendation of Mr. Flynn's as he helps guide us through our current bonds and our future bonding capacities. So he has been overseeing this process for us and getting us underway. And he's going to introduce our consultants, very high level, just to give you some background on what they do, how they're going to do it, and what you can expect in the coming weeks and months. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lawrence.
Thanks, Tracy. So I see some new faces. I'm Lawrence Flynn, Popeye Law Firm across the river. You're obviously in really good hands with Danny, but my firm's role is to serve as bond counsel. And so that's just a fancy name for the lawyer that helps you when you borrow money. And there's basically two ways that the city borrows money. You do it by way of general obligation debt, which is debt secured by your full paid credit and tax power, which the city doesn't really have any of. You don't actually levy any debt secured by your tax base. But you also maintain separately your enterprise fund, the water and sewer system that you provide water and sewer services in your community and outside your municipal limits by contract. And in order to run that system and administer that system, it's a fairly expensive ordeal. It's a business enterprise of the city that was established for that purpose, and it helps you grow and sometimes serves as a way of incentivizing folks to annex into your municipal limits. And so through the years, the city has done a number of borrowings secured by the revenues of the combined utility system. And so there's a process by state law for how you borrow that money. It's explicitly recognized by the Constitution. And I brought a copy of the most recent borrowing we did from 2020. No one has to memorize this by the end of the day. When I walked in with it, Kelly said, goodness gracious, is that 2020? I think it was giving her PTSD. But there's a lot of time and energy that goes into this process and just at a really, really high level. You as individual members of council, unlike an investor-owned utility like a Duke or one of the, there's not a ton of for-profit water and sewer utilities, but like a Carolina water system that you're probably familiar with over in Lexington County, has to run through the Public Service Commission when it comes to the approval of rates. When the municipality owns the utility system, you are not responsible to any other third-party oversight body. The decision in the ultimate domain to raise and lower rates ultimately rests exclusively with city council. You all have that sole discretion and the ability to raise and lower rates as you otherwise see fit to make sure that you're not overburdening your customer base. But part and parcel to that kind of independent rate-making authority is that you have to maintain and continue to sustain the system in a way that, you know, meets the public health standards associated with the Clean Water Act and the Drinking Water Act. So that means that when your water is ultimately treated, that it's safe for notable water consumption. And when you discharge your sanitary sewer discharge after it's been treated, that it can be pumped back into the river without causing, you know, organic matter and other issues. And so in doing that, when you do big capital projects, they're expensive. The good news is, is that you can fund those out over a long period of time through borrowings. And through that borrowing process, which we do on what's called a parity basis. So unlike when you borrow in a personal capacity, if you were to go out and borrow money for a house, when you, when you put that, you say you put 10% down, your primary mortgage would be the 80% borrowing. And if you needed another 10%, you do a second mortgage that typically has a lower interest rate, excuse me, has a higher interest rate because of the risk associated with being downstream for borrowing. When we borrow money in the utility markets, we borrow on a parity basis, which means that every time you borrow new money, you're secured by the same source of revenues. Each lender stands shoulder to shoulder from a security standpoint. And so in order to be able to continue to keep that security at a level where the bank still comes by lending you future money in the future or giving you more money in the future as you need additional capital projects, you have to make sure that you're actively monitoring your rates, sustaining your rates, and building a rate structure that ultimately can support the daily operations of your facilities, which includes paying for staff, paying for chemicals, paying for electricity costs, also paying for the debt service, the annual principal and interest payments that you have on your outstanding bonds, and then also planning for future borrowings that you may need in the future. And, you know, as we stand here today, and everyone recognizes that we're dealing up in this inflationary cycle where everything is getting more expensive. It costs more, you know, to keep the lights on in this room, just like it costs more money to keep the pump running and your system, it costs more money to buy the chemicals, it costs more money to maintain the staff that you have. And so you need to make sure that you're paying particular attention to the rates and charges that you're levying within reason. The goal here is not trying to manufacture a windfall of cash. In fact, it's actually probably not a credit positive if you see, you know, 10 years of cash on hand that you can operate the system. But you want to keep some healthy reserves and you want to keep a funded kind of operating balance that you can continue to do some pay-go projects, continue to fund your debt reserves, and fund all of those kind of annual obligations on the system. And so, you may ask yourself, why is he talking about this? Well, the reason is, is as the independent rate-making authority for the city, you were required under your bond coverage, you told your bondholders that we're going to review our rates and charges on an annual basis and make sure that they're sufficient for all the purposes that we otherwise need. And so you have really sophisticated, smart staff, you have really, really good engineers. But just because you have these smart people that are doing the day-to-day operations, sometimes you need a higher level of review to make sure that, first of all, that your rates are uniformly applied. What you don't want to see is that you're overcharging your industrial customers to the burden of your, to the burden of your residential customers, that you're spreading those costs to your commercial customers to the exclusion of your industrial customers. And so there are a couple of very unique firms, and Raffatellus is one that I've worked with on a number of occasions and feel very, very comfortable about that work. And I'll certainly let Mahela give the introduction to our firm here in a second. But they're exclusive domain if rate making. And so when Tracy actually reached out, and Betsy reached out and said, hey, we're thinking about doing the rate study. We know it's probably all over. We want to make sure that we have that parity in our rate structure, you know, who should we look to? And I said, you know, I think the person that I would bring on is Raffatellus. They're really, really good. They've got a long history of doing this work all over the southeast. Their opinion is well-recognized. And there's some little validity in knowing that you've gone with an independent consultant that is recognized in the market and that uses uniform standards for rate making. And so what they're proposing, part of their process is in working with your staff and working with me, there's been a lot of information flow. And so getting the information to kind of build a rate model that they can say, okay, here's where we are, here's where we ultimately need to get, and here's the revenue target we're trying to identify. And so they basically build out a full model that gives you the ability to tweak and adjust and make all the necessary changes that you need such that you can support your system with a rate base that's equitable and fair. And that's ultimately the major goal of all of this, is being able to go back and tell your customers, you know, when someone comes and knocks on the door and says, well, my bill, you know, and my water and sewer bill has gone up 20%. I mean, you can say, well, not only was, you know, that's the least amount of adjustment we could do in light of all this inflation. We've run it through an independent consultant, and they've said, based on our plans and what we need, this is the necessary amount of money that we need to continue to sustain the system. And so with that, Mahela, I'm sure you will correct many things that I've said that may be incorrect, but that's the introduction to Raffatellus.
Well, thank you for having us. Lawrence kind of gave you the five-minute version of what I'll spend about 20 minutes talking about. So today, we're just going to give you an overview of what we call Rate 101. So basically, what do we do? How do we do it? And then next time we come, we'll talk about the specific model and recommendations for you all. I'm Mahela Kuhmashet. We'll do some introductions, and then we'll go through the rest, rate setting process, financial plan, cost of service, and rate design. And so this is our team. I'm project manager. I'm the one that's been working with Betsy and Lawrence, and Lawrence and I work on numerous projects together. We'll call tomorrow. And then Piper Brand is our president and CEO, and he is the project director for this project. He is the one that's been involved in, you know, validating our recommendations, and he unfortunately couldn't be here today. He wishes he was, and he had a previous conflict. And then I've been here with me, and he's one of our associate consultants, and he's basically the one that's doing all the work. So who we are, as Lawrence mentioned, we're one of, we are the most experienced utility finance and management consulting firm. We do this exclusively. A lot of the times, you'll find groups within engineering firms that also do financial studies. This is all we do. We do financial and management consulting. We have about 170 consultants now throughout the country, and we have served about over 1,700 utilities and local governments. This is just to give you an overview of where we've worked. Our headquarters are in Charlotte, just, you know, up the street, up 77. But we are located in other places as well. I'm personally Charleston, so I'm that, whatever, I'm geographically challenged, whatever that is. But we work with a lot of utilities in the southeast, and I've worked with a lot of utilities in South Carolina, so we're very familiar with the local environment, with what other utilities are doing around you. And we've brought all of that in consideration when looking at your study. When we do these studies, we rely on, obviously, our, you know, previous experience, but we also rely on guidelines and resources that have been published that provide guidance on how to calculate rates. M1, which is the first one here, that's what we call our Bible, that's our Rates 101 book. It's continuously updated. I have worked with folks that have been involved in writing and rewriting this manual, and it's the one that details the guidelines on how we can establish rates and how we allocate costs and what you can do and what you can't do. And then there are a few others, like the charges for wastewater systems, and then various other books. I believe this is the one that George wrote. George Raffatellus, our founder, he wrote, he wrote a book too. He wrote his own Rates 101. So how do we set rates? Well, when we set rates, what's our goal? We want to make sure you generate sufficient revenues to cover your revenue requirements. We also want to make sure that your rates are defensible if challenged. You want to make sure that you meet all of your stakeholders' objectives. And by stakeholders, we talk about, you know, your customers, you all, your, you know, businesses that are your customers and so on, as well as the bondholders and anyone that has any kind of relation with the utility. And then we want to make sure that those are consistent with industry best practices. So we have a lot of competing goals that we try to put together. So how do we do it? It's sort of a layered process. We start with identifying kind of the overall financial and pricing objectives, and this is where we look at your bond's bond coverage requirements. So we know that, you know, you can't have a coverage that falls below a certain requirement because that's what's in the bond documents. We look at your cash reserve or the financial policies that you have, and we make sure that we're aware of those and what we're working towards. Then we look at the revenue requirements and the demand for your, on your system. We allocate those costs across various customer classes, and then we look at the design of a rate structure, and then kind of pull that all back together and how that lines up with the pricing objectives that we discussed in the beginning. So pricing objectives, this is where we have a balancing act. We want to have rates that are easy to implement, but also recoup the fair share cost of every customer class. You want to make sure your rates are affordable. You want to make sure you also have revenue stability, there's rate stability. We don't want to have a situation where, you know, one year we raise rates 20%, then we decrease them 10%, then we raise them again 15. We want, you know, we want to have an annual plan of consistent small rate increases to get you to what you need to do. And that's why we look at 10-year plans and look into 10 years of spending that you need to do. We want to make sure they're easy for your customers to understand. There are a lot of objectives that we take into account when we look at your rates. And what we do with all that is we start with the financial plan, and this is a really busy slide, but what I wanted to emphasize with this is there are a lot of pieces and parts that go into the financial plan. So basic, well, every time I try to do this already, it does, so I'm just going to give up. Okay, so what we do is we start with your inputs, and that's where we work with staff to get data from the system. We start with your budget. We get your billing data details. We get your capital plan. We get your beginning cash, debt service. And then we look at, we put those all in our model. We project revenues and we project revenue requirements. We look at the policies and objectives that we've set, and then generate an annual cash flow, which leads to recommended rate increases to generate the revenue that you need. So how do we do that? We project your costs based on a variety of, based on a variety of needs. For example, we start with your operating budget, and we look at the expenses line by line. Some of them have an inflationary rate increase. Some of them, we, you know, are a one-time thing, and we make sure we don't include it again. Others, for example, if you may need to hire additional personnel, you make sure we account. Others, for example, if you may need to hire additional personnel, then make sure we account for that and budget for that in whatever year that needs to happen. After we project your operating expenses, the debt service and the capital plan usually come to us, already developed over a five to 10-year plan. We look at your demand. So what we do is we take your billing data, we look at your number of accounts and at your usage, and we calculate the revenues generated based on that billing data. And then we compare that with what you've actually collected in the financial system. And we want to be sure that we're close. We're never going to be exact. I don't think I've ever worked on a project where we were exactly on the same number. It's just the difference between a cool, a cool sometimes, or different adjustments on the financial system, but we want to make sure that we're close and that we're comfortable with the billing data that we have. And then we talk with staff, and we try to understand what we're looking at in terms of growth. Are we expecting a bunch of new developments over the next few years? Are we expecting a large customer to leave the area? And we determine our projections for the, for the units and for your usage based on that, and then we apply whatever rate recommendations we built into the model to calculate your So this is, if you remember the pyramid, I walked you through the five steps. Now I'm going to go a little bit in more detail on each step. And if anyone has a question at any time, feel free to stop me and let me know. So the first step is identifying the financial and pricing objectives. And this is where we look at all of those things that I've already mentioned, affordability, revenue stability, ease of implementation, cost of service results, customer impact, equitable contributions from your new customers versus your existing customers. And then step two is the revenue requirements, and this is where the four, the four pieces that we talk about go into play. Your operating expenses, your debt service, Pago, which is the cash-funded capital, and reserve requirements. And in debt service, by debt service, we mean existing debt service and any projected debt service for the capital that we would identify as being funded from future debt. So how do we do that? We start with your operating budget. For the operating expenses, for the CIP, we look at your current plan, and then we have discussions with staff to try to understand if you already have a plan for funding some of these projects. At least in the last few years, we've all had the opportunity to receive a whole lot of grant money, so that, that's been a useful thing. And so we try to make sure we understand if any of the projects you've given us in the list are grant-funded. If any of them are earmarked to be funded from specific sources, we can also look at, you know, we work with other utilities where we look at doing loans through some new and emerging programs like the WFIAP program. And then we look at your reserves, and that's where we look at, you know, as Lawrence mentioned, we don't want you to have 10 years of cash, but you can't have no cash. There are multiple reasons to build reserves. One is a lot of the grants require matches, so you need to have some cash to be able to provide the match. And as you know, a lot of the utilities in South Carolina receive the 10 millions of grant funds. Well, all of those require a match, so you have to have some funds. And then there are emergency things that happen that you need to have funds for. So we typically, you know, when I first started many years ago, we used to say that three months of reserves was a general good target. Now we're talking about 360 days of reserves that we want to see as a minimum.
And those are in line with the rating agency projections on their methodology for certain levels of rate of credit. And so when we sell bonds in the capital markets, we go out and we have an independent rating review from S and P and from Moody's. And based on those determinations, they'll assign a credit rating, which basically is an attempt to equalize your credit vis a vis every other utility that's otherwise operating in the United States as a water sewer. And so they have those benchmarks as well, and a lot of these internal criteria on, you know, median household income where your rates are going to be, and then cash on hand. All of those things are things that check the box for you to make sure that you're in the wheelhouse of the rate that you otherwise need to be. Now, there's some demographic things that you otherwise can't control. There's some system-sized things that you can't control, but the rate side of building cash is something that you absolutely.
So is that 360 days all-inclusive of potential grants and emergencies?
360 days of operating expenses is what we usually would look at. And then sometimes, depending on the case, we also look at having some sort of capital reserve. Could be the level of your annual depreciation, or depending on what's coming.
So 360 is not all-inclusive. You're looking at 360 plus.
Plus, correct. The minimum would be 360 of O and F. You know, we would not want to have less than that. And then on top of that, we can work on building other reserves as the needs may arise.
There's also ways, and this is something that they can look into, about building rate stabilization funds. So once you get your, your cash to a place that it otherwise needs to be, y'all are comfortable that allows you to sustain your operations in event of some catastrophic result. And, and look, there, there are also extenuating circumstances on why you want to maintain that cash. You don't have a lot of the, the high-level users, so you don't have even diversity of your system because it's largely residential. But if you had, say, a major chicken plant on the system that represented 30% of your revenues, and they went out of business next week, all of a sudden, the only way you make up that 30% loss of your customer base is it's got to be spread among the existing customers. And so looking at those types of kind of individual considerations on usage are things that they're going to look specifically to, to say, hey, this is a potential risk. We need to mitigate that risk by building additional cash, or you don't have it because you've got such a diversity of payers. And so there are, there are cities that absolutely have that risk.
Question, do y'all form a list of our top rate payers and share them with us?
We have, so that's actually part of your reporting responsibilities, and Kelly probably could rattle them off the top of her head because those are the best clients, the customers that you have. Those are reported out nationally on an annual basis, and it's actually probably a supplemental schedule to your audit now as well. Some people report it that way, some people do it separately. But if you want that information, we can certainly share that with you.
Oh, and do y'all break it down from businesses in our city and then the ones outside of our city?
It is. So remember, your utility system serves within the city limits and outside the city limits by contract. And so, you know, in most cities, and this is another consideration that is part of the rate model that needs to be determined, most cities charge a higher rate outside their municipal limits than they do in their municipal limits. And there's, there's some, there's some reasons for doing that. Frankly, your ancestral customers likely built this system and received some rate benefits associated with it, and there's justification by state law, or at least a history of case law that supports the ability to charge different rates. But those are also the folks that vote for the system and pay taxes. And so if they're not otherwise providing a benefit through tax base or through business license, the only thing that they're doing is using your utility system and causing burden on your system. That's part of that kind of equitable distribution and determination of how you make your rates defensible from an equity standpoint. And part of those studies that she otherwise alluded to, that's part of kind of the standard or national rate-making policy.
So y'all's studies kind of help cities decide whether, let's say, a business is outside of their city limits, and they're, they have the work where, hey, technically annex y'all in. Y'all's study would be like, hey, if you annex them in, this is how much you're losing, and this is how much you're going to spread that amount of money to your constituents to cover for them.
If you have situations where that is a consideration, then yes, we take that into account as well. And that is actually one of the, one of your risks is the large number of outside customers. You have more outside customers than inside customers, basically. So that's one of the things that we look at as a, as a risk.
And I'll just add to your, your particular questions on the water sewer users. These are a little bit outdated, and I would assume have changed a ton because I'm not aware of any major closures. But on the water system, there's a recital here of your top 10 customers, and the top 10 represent about 26% to 27% of the aggregate total revenues of the system, which is actually higher than I expected it to be. Your, your largest one in 2020 was Artesa, or what is it? So I don't know, I'm going to, I'm going to, Arista, that's, and they're a really large water user. And so they were 7% in, and so I think it made the hospital. So, and they've grown because obviously the, the system continues to grow. On the sewer side, you're at 40% based on your top 10. Now, the reason for that is, is because you're the regional sewer provider, and you sell wholesale sewer to the town of Lexington and the joint commission. And so they get incorporated, Town of Lexington's 25% of that, joint commission is about 10% of that. So the risk of losing the town is less, but if they decided to go out tomorrow and cancel your contract to build their own treatment plant, that's potentially a risk, and that happened to a neighbor municipality down 26 not all that long ago. And so that's, those are the things that, when you start talking about what are these potential risk factors, if you lost the Town of Lexington on your sewer system tomorrow, you'd have to make up 25% of your rates overnight in addition to the debt service that they're paying, you know, on, on your system. And so all of those things are factors that need to be considered. And so one of the things I'll also look to is, what are the terms of those existing agreements with the joint commission and with the town? Because if they have the ability to terminate that agreement in five years, what's the risk that they terminate it and they go build their own plant? And this is all very theoretical. You know, we're not, we're not talking about the happens.
It's good, it's good.
But, but those are the types of things, and the reason that you want someone independent to come in and say, hey, have you thought about this? Let's build that rate base. Because another part of the rate consideration, and your contracts control this, but you've got to be able to make sure you allocate those wholesale rates back to those customers that are paying wholesale charges on your sewer system. And so you want to make sure that they're being treated proportionally based on what their treatment costs are, and they're not otherwise picking up the allocated costs of your collection system. And that, that's going to be dictated by the contracts, but they'll build that into their rate analysis as well.
Can you go back to that first scenario when you said the top 10 users were the 26%?
This was in 2020. I don't have a.
And that's fine. What was, what's the total aggregate, aggregate customer?
In 2020, on the water system, you had, give me one second.
I think I heard right. The top 10 are 26%.
That's correct. 26% of your revenue.
Right. So the top 10 are 26% of revenue of total.
You had, you had 7,800 total customers in, water customers in 2020, and you had, here, you had almost 13,000 silver customers.
Got you a little bible there, don't you?
I'm telling you, this is, you can do anything you otherwise need to. That's the reason Kelly, I like opened up, and I could see Kelly starting to get upset.
She's smart, I get it. That's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I hate those on my shelf.
But it's, it's a testament to all your hard work.
It really is. That's.
Yes, thank you.
Some good information that you shared. I mean, nothing that I don't think that our city leaders don't already, you know, have at the foremost, but it's good for us to better understand what places look at that all the time.
Okay, so part two of our, step two is determining, determining the demand projections, and this is what we take into consideration, all the things that can affect usage and customers. Basically, all this conversation we just had, are you annexing? Are people leaving? Do we have new developments? Is there an industry coming or going? And that's how we project our revenues. Then step three is to look at allocating the costs. So cost of service is the process by which we make sure that your revenue requirements are recovered from each customer class in the proportion to which they put burden on your system. Different types of customers have different costs that they place on your system based on their usage and demand characteristics. A residential customer is going to have a wildly, a very different pattern of use than a hospital or a brewery. And so those are the kind of things we look at, an inside customer versus an outside customer. And so this is a few of the things that we're looking at and considering. Are you recovering enough costs from your fixed charges versus your variable charges? Are you recovering appropriate costs from your inside versus outside customers? What about residential versus commercial customers? And so that's part of the process, is we will look at all of those pieces to make sure that we have appropriate cost recovery from each category. And then after we do all that, we talk about rate structures. And that's, the first step will be to look at the overall increase needed in revenues. And then the second piece of that is, how do we apply that in a rate structure? Do we apply that uniformly across all water sewer customers? Do we increase the base charge more? Do we increase the volumetric rate more? Do we increase water more versus sewer? And that's the, that's, that's what rate design is. That's basically where we take, let's just say that our rate recommendations are X%. How do we divide that X% in between the different types of rates and the different types of customer classes to make sure that each class pays for their fair share of the costs? And also that we can implement those rates, and they're feasible, and your billing system can accommodate those rates, and all the other pieces that we looked at in the pricing objectives. This is just to show you kind of the, the spectrum of different types of rate structures with budget individualized rates being what they do in California with the Prop 218, where they have to have very, you know, very specific.
We're not going to suggest that.
No, 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 it's just, they exist all the way to flat rates. And different utilities have different rates for different reasons. And so we work with your staff to make sure that the rate structure that you have makes sense for your system. This is just to kind of show you the diversity of rate structures that exist. And so then after we do all that, we want to bring it back to the first step and make sure that the pricing objectives that we set in make sense, that we, the customer impacts are not exorbitant, that, you know, we're not going to raise rates so much that there'll be some price elasticity and your customers will start using less, and then we're not really getting the revenues that we need, that your rates continue to be affordable, that you're in line with other utilities, especially here where we have so many right, you know, right next to each other. We'll look at their rates and your rates and make sure that we're within the same range, taking into consideration that you each have different situations and different costs that you have to incur. And then we also want to make sure that we do this in steps if we need to do something really large. So if, for example, a utility needed to do a 30% cost increase, a rate increase, I would say, do we want to do 30% or do we want to do 215s? Or do we want to do 310s? So we will work with you and staff to understand how we can implement this to mitigate the impact on customers if we had to do something that was drastic. I'm not saying that that's the case, I'm just, this is how we can look at things.
And there's some games you can play with that, too, not to say that we would gamify your, your rate structure, but we've been in plenty of those situations, and the good news is the city, we don't think is there, that's the reason we're doing the study. But there's a lot of folks that said, look, you know, we want to keep rates low, we're not adjusting with inflation, you know, we're not putting on that 1% or 2%, 3% rate adjustment every single year. So all of those things are eating everyone else up, are starting to eat us up as well. So it's starting to cut into our bottom line. And so when they come in and they make that recommendation, yeah, you need a 20% rate increase just to get back to the place where you've got to start putting revenues to your bottom line, you can remember that there is a bit of a compounding factor. And so if you split that rate, you don't put a 20% in year one, you instead do a 9% in year one and a 9% in year two, you compound that 9% with 9% the next year to get effectively to that same 20% with two-step adjustments. And so it's just a matter of how, you know, at the end of the day, remember this decision ultimately rests with city council, but you were also, you're also the fiduciaries for the rate payers and your, and the bondholders. They are going to expect you to continue to maintain rates. Remember, you have independent rate control, but if you don't make the rate adjustments that you, that you're required to do, the bondholders only security goes to revenues. And so if you don't do it, and you fall below certain thresholds, or you don't maintain the rates and can't pay your debt service, then the trustee can come in and actually do the rates for you. That's not going to happen here. But it's, that is, that is the, the, the ultimate comfort that the bondholders have in loaning you this money is to say, you know, I know that if City Casey doesn't decide to rate, raise these rates at the level they're supposed to in order to continue to get paid, a third-party trustee is going to come in and make you do it.
I don't look at the good news.
I don't think that's going to happen. But I have had that conversation before.
Yes, with, with that in mind, you know, I mean, you've seen it too. Just because of the costs, the inflation, the raising chemical costs lately, we've seen, what, 5% to 10% become the new normal for annual rate increases around us. It used to be two to three annual rate increases. Now we're talking 5% to 8% to 9%.
And you see that, because if you look at the Act 388 adjustments that allow you to raise your millage, remember, you can raise operating millage by CPI on population growth every year. For the longest time, we had very minimal population, and we had very, very minimal CPI or inflation. But the last several years, and, you know, Lexington County is no different, you're growing, get great guns. You see those, you see all the developments happening around here, and you also see these inflation percentages that are, I think it was in, in 2021, you were over 8%, and then in 2022, we were over 6%. And this most, this upcoming year, I think we're over 5%. So all of a sudden, you start thinking about that base inflation, if you're not putting that. that level of rate increase into your rates, you're reducing your buying power by the amount of money that you're not otherwise raising rates. Uh, which is not to say that you have to do that, but that's how you got to keep up the system going forward because all those calls pass to you as well.
So that's what we do in the rate study process is we look at all those pieces and then work with you to make sure that ultimately the rate recommendations we give you are what we think you need to do in order to stay on top of all the things. I mean, for example, I, I live in Mount Pleasant and we also work for Mount Pleasant and they've done three years in a row of 9% to 11% rate increases right now, um, which on the one side I recommend and on the other side as the customer, I'm like, that really hurts. But that's, that's where we are and that's where we've been, you know, we've had, um, utilities with, you know, double-digit rate increases because they haven't done anything in 10 years and we had to play some catch-up. So what we recommend typically is that, uh, you know, this is the hardest part, setting up the model initially. Um, after that, you know, we typically recommend that we, um, work with.
It's the hardest part for us, the hardest part for you. Comes in a little while.
Right. This is the most work right now, the initial setup. And then, you know, we would recommend that we work with, um, with the staff annually to update it and make sure that whatever rate increases we have still makes sense based on whatever happens during the year. Um, you know, especially the last couple of years or so, we had rate increases recommended, recommended and set in place and then the chemical costs that hit everyone threw those out the window. So we had to go back and, and look at what the impact is of having those. Uh, we had one, um, one client, one utility where, um, the mid-contract, the provider doubled the cost and said, well, we don't care, if you don't pay, we're not going to give you the chemicals you need. So we had to look at that. Um, and so that's why we recommend that we do this annually and that's why we also recommend that you have an annual plan of some level of rate increases because the costs are only rising.
And it becomes easier once they've been through this process where you establish a structure that works and that you built kind of fundamental equity into your rate base so that you know that you're treating all of the various classes within your system correctly. Then you can come and say, all right, we're going to do an across-the-board 3% adjustment because everyone is being treated proportionally associated with us. But you have to get to that place to know that your rates are set appropriately to begin with. And that'll be part of the analysis, if there are adjustments that need to be made to your existing rate structure and, you know, your, your industrial is substantially subsidizing your residential, that would likely be a recommendation. And then ultimately council needs to make the decision as to how, you know, how much of that burden you want to push on at one time.
Yep, so we'll give you recommendations and we'll also give you our recommendations in terms of, we recommend you do this first and then this can wait and let's do this next year. Um, and then ultimately, like Lauren said, you all decide how you want to proceed, but we'll also recommend what we think makes the most sense and is most feasible to implement in one order.
Do y'all compare our city to other cities around our, um, size and everything? Do y'all compare the city, hey, they did this rate increase this year or do y'all not do that?
We do, we do, um, we compare with the neighboring utilities. We also have comparisons with other utilities nationally, um, that we do, um, that are your similar size. In South Carolina, we have the RIA, the Rural Infrastructure Association that does a study every year, um, that captures all the utilities within the state so that we have that great information resource.
And that's public, so if you, if you went to South Carolina RIA, so South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority, they post every municipal utility that provides water sewer services in the state and then gives an indicative rate based on assumed 5,000 gallons of usage. Um, so you can pretty much benchmark yourself to anyone in, in the state and you'll see there are extremes kind of all over, um, to be able to, to serve as a benchmark so you can have some indication of where you stand.
And there are things to take into consideration, for example, the coastal communities have different costs and things that, you know, they have to do that, you know, the saltwater affects the infrastructure more so than here. So there's those things that we wouldn't necessarily compare you with the coastal communities, but we would look at the neighboring utilities within the Columbia area.
Yeah, there's some things that are unfair, like if you, if you go over some rural community and they put a pipe in the ground and they're sucking water out of a well and their only treatment cost, they're putting some, some chlorine on it so they can produce water for 20 cents a gallon and you have to take it out of the river, go through your entire treatment process, put all the chemicals in and run it out, that's a much more expensive treatment process than someone who's just pumping it out there. Um, and so there's, there's a lot of those kind of nuances that you have to kind of think through, but generally speaking, we've got some good indicator. You can compare yourself to the city of Columbia, you can compare yourself to the city of West Columbia, um, you can generally compare yourself to the city of Newbury. Places like that will be good benchmarks because they're about the same size, they've got about the same customer base, they've got about the same service area. Um, and so those, those are the types of folks that we could provide those benchmarks on. And I say we, this is all, tell us, but we, we, we work on this stuff a lot.
We do. Um, and so to wrap it up, this just kind of shows the, um, the types of rate structures and how they line up from more, more affordability friendly versus less affordability friendly. And the goal is to try to find, find a balance, um, between that, you know, we want to make sure that you recover, you have a fixed charge that is high enough to recover all of those fixed costs and a lot of your utility costs are fixed, your labor costs don't change, um, you know, some of the, um, your debt service costs don't change unless we borrow more. Those are costs that are fixed and they're a large portion, but we want to make sure that we balance that with, we don't want to have a, that high of a base charge that the low income can't afford to pay that. So we'll work to make sure that we find that sweet spot in between that meets, and none of the rate structures are perfect in the end, we just work to get to the best possible situation that we can with what you have. And I think that's all I had. Yes.
And I'll throw one more curveball in there, Betsy, you'd kill me for that. Another thing to think about, because it's the way that your system is continuing to grow, to the extent you're not reviewing capacity fees or you're not thinking about capacity fees, the cost of capital of water and sewer has become exponentially expensive, especially on the sewer system. In such an extent that you are not properly capturing the reimbursement of your fixed capital cost for assets that you've built with your ancestral rate payers through time and you're giving it away or you're having them subsidize it by giving it away to new development and not charging new development for that growth, um, is leaving money on the table. What's going to wind up happening is when you absorb all your capacity and your water system doesn't have sufficient capacity to provide service, your sewer system doesn't have capacity to provide service and you have to go and do an expansion of those facilities, we're finding that it's substantially more expensive than people thought. And so we're talking to the tune, I have a client right now that is going from a $20 million gallon a day sewer treatment plant to a $30 million gallon plant. So that's a, that's a $10 million, $10 million gallon sewer treatment plant expansion. They originally thought that it was going to be in the neighborhood of about $25 a gallon, which would have been $250 million to expand that plant. It's now 50. So it's $500 million to expand, expand their treatment plant by 10G. Now, they're discharging into a nutrient-qualified discharge basis, like there's some things that they have to work with, but the one thing that all this free money has created is inflation because what they didn't do is create new engineers, they didn't create new contractors, but they gave a whole bunch of free money to everyone. So another one of those calls, that match side of the free money that we got from RIA. So originally it was a 15% match and folks said, well, I've got, I've planned for a $12 million project, RIA is going to give me 10, I'm going to put my 200,000 in and then they go out for bid and the project comes in at 18.
Right.
So all of a sudden, that match is not 50%, it's 80%, but you got to make up the difference. Um, and that's, that's where these calls are really, really coming home. So I don't want to go too far afield on it, we're just talking about rate study.
We looked at those too. So we didn't talk to you about what system development fees are or capacity fees are, but we did look at those as well as part of the study. So when we come back next month, we will give you recommendations on those.
Would you call that system development?
System development fees, impact fees, capacity fees, they, they.
All the same, that's what I wanted to hear, if you were going to take into consideration impact fees, we, you make a lot of sense what you're saying, especially with the monies that have come down, they're not taking into consideration what it's going to cost to our system five and 10 years down the road. But that's an impact fee upon the people who have paid to put this in place for years and years. So we need to compensate for them.
And there, and the nice thing about it is those calls are fixed, you know what the numbers are, right, you only know what the systems were and you can assign a dollar figure associated with that.
I know the mayor knows this, but fellow council members, we're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars, millions of dollars. I mean, it makes looking at the funded department of the city small compared to what this would be. Serious.
And, and by most standards, the city of Casey, you know, if you think of yourself as a veteran community of the city of Columbia, I know y'all don't, but you are a big.
Columbia is a suburb.
Correct, correct. Columbia is definitely a suburb of Casey, but, but you are a large utility system of the state, yeah. And so all of those calls are, we're talking really, really big dollars. Um, you know, when, I think when y'all did your original sewer plan, it was the largest SRF plant in the state of all, that's what I've never done, the $25 million. And I don't want to put, put words in Betsy mouth yet, but I, I would, it's easy to say that no one could probably double or triple that. So you'd be at $7,500 million, $100 million.
And I appreciate your point that out because, you know, people like Becky and others that worked so hard to make this happen every single day, they think that she's there with the city of Casey water and sewer. Now, we strong way further than that and, and how we affect the municipalities and the land behind the city of Casey is instrumental. Most people just think that we're over in the city of Casey.
And you were the tip and spear for breath in this.
I agree. Forefathers were very smart with that.
Any other questions?
Oh, we could go on and on.
Okay. I guess.
What you have?
4:30, I'm crazy.
Wow. Personally, that's just been so educational to me, thanks Tracy. And that's been really good.
We wanted to do this before we came in and just threw recommendations at you so that we can just talk about the recommendations when we come back.
You wanted to get us prepared.
Yeah, we, we put the foundation down.
Some call it buttering up.
Now, we put the foundation down so that we can have, you know, a productive conversation when we bring in the recommendations and the talks.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, Lawrence.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, bro. Really good.
Always a pleasure.
Go back to that.
Pass some water before you leave.
See ya. On your way to that other city.
I'll go back, I'll go back to the office.
I spent a couple of years here too.
Bye, see y'all.
Thank you. At their top-notch, um, you know, of course, Lawrence is so knowledgeable about these things and our system, so it's on him overseeing that process was really instrumental for us and kind of more efficient in the end. So they're, they're close to having some actual things on paper and, you know, the course of the next couple of months, we'll be bringing that back to you for direct feedback. Again, timely for upcoming budget talk.
Thank you also.
Betsy and Mike have been managing that really well.
Betsy and Mike is like.
She's probably crying.
She's having a few questions.
She's great.
All right, so next we have appointment process and, um, in the interest of just trying to get us to a good place, I, I took together some thoughts and I wanted council to know that I've heard you and that you all know very clearly, I don't think this is a broken system, but I always think we can do things better. So I've got a couple of thoughts in case this helps us to kind of move quickly to a good place with this. This is Rock Hills' application and, um, there's a couple of questions that are highlighted on here. I just wonder if maybe this is a good thing for us to do to add, add a couple of other questions to our application, um, so that it will give council a little bit more information about folks who want to volunteer, but without being intimidating and, um, and, and words possibly discouraging people from wanting to volunteer and getting involved with the city. So the questions that are on here that may be helpful, if you guys can look at these, why do you want to serve on, uh, this city of Rock Hill Board or Commission? What specific contributions do you hope to make? What community topics concern you that relate to this board or commission? What experience, training qualifications do you have for this particular board or commission? So just a couple of thoughts there of some questions that maybe we could add to our application going forward for new applications. And then the other thing would be to have our police department do a review of our system to look to see if there's anything in our records, um, that maybe shows some safety or legal or behavioral, uh, concerns or issues that maybe we don't want somebody representing the city and, or wanting them in a position of authority. Um, I think these two suggestions maybe hopefully will get us to a good place without being overly bureaucratic or cumbersome and I'm hoping maybe gets us to council's goals and wants to be. Does that help? Does that?
Appreciate you coming with some, some ideas like this and hearing us, um, actually pull the application from Forest Acres to add some similar questions that I'm seeing on here.
Yep.
And I agree with you.
These are all the same.
I was, I was wondering, I was like, I'm looking at the same thing. But I also agree on the, having an internal view on our systems by the chief. Is it, is there anything else that we kind of want to throw on the table too?
Just, just.
Questions that stick out outside of all of them?
Yeah, just to, first of all, mayor, I want to say thank you, thank you very, very much. And when the mayor made the comment about, um, don't think that our system is broken, I don't either. I do think that it, we, we keep up with times, like you just said, and that if there's enhancements that we can do, that we do that. And certainly one of those enhancements, we look at Rock Hills, um, and Rock Hills got some really good questions on here that wouldn't negate somebody from serving, but it certainly helps us to better understand why somebody wants to serve. And I, I love these questions on here. And, um, our city manager's already, you know, spoke that it would be fairly easy for her to, um, to do some in-house reviews to make sure that we are appointing a quality person, i.e. that there's not been any police reports or things of that nature that's been, been done, right?
Yeah. Full of a police report, if that's what you mean by in-house, yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, um, just a better way of putting it. But I, I think that, um, that, that's, I think that's knowledge that would be very helpful for, for us. And when we spoke with Danny Crow about this, Danny did say it's, not that you have to, but it's not a bad thing to be able to take other things into consideration when voting on a citizen to represent, um, our commission or boards. And these are things, mayor, that I, I think you've already pointed out, that are certainly what I would like to see. Um, the, the only other thing, and Mindy, you may say, Tim, that's already being done, don't worry about that at all. I know that, um, so one of the very first things that I ask when somebody says, hey, Tim, would you like to help us with such and such? I say, what is your standing meeting? Because if I can't meet them, well, then I can't be involved with you. And I know if they research us, then certainly they're going to find, okay, well, if you want all beautification, it meets this day, but they have to do some research. Now, what gives me a little bit of concern is we have had some people, and you guys will agree, I was just looking back to see and check, but we've had some people fill out an application and check every single commission and committee. Does that mean that they can attend any time that we meet? Or have we communicated with them to say, okay, I want to make sure that you know that we do meet the first Tuesday at 7:00 PM? Because I think that's what our board chairs and commission chairs want, is that people are committing themselves to those times to be able to be at those specific meetings. So that's just something that I would encourage us to work towards making sure that folks know when our standing meetings are and they're committing to that versus us as council, six months later having to say, if you miss three meetings, you're no longer there.
So why not?
It's on there.
Yeah, it's on.
But what I'm, what I was saying to Mindy on the pyramid, right, is they have to search this and then they search this, and then there are some people that are checking every single one of them on the application form. So that means that they're saying that truly they can just about attend any time or any day.
I mean.
All I'm asking, mayor, is that we confirm that. That's, 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 that's all I'm asking, is that this person says, yes, I can, I can make those meetings.
Nice, yeah.
And one thing I might even suggest too, to add to that, is just that an, an individual application be filled out for each.
True.
Board and commission. I think that just makes it easier for Mindy to, and not allow the multiple checking on a single file. So there may be a way that we can think creatively. So, there may be a way that we can think creatively.
Well, I think if you look at these questions from Rock Hill, you're really wanting to know.
So, it is one per, yeah, it does. So, so multiple ones would need to be filled out for multiple things.
Agreed.
And so, that information could be disseminated. We'll figure out.
Yeah, because, you know, what specific contributions do you make to this commission? You know, well, then it's going to be individual, wasn't it? Listen, we, we do have citizens of abundance that really want to serve, and they have great qualifications that they'd like to share on that particular reason for service.
Mindy, what's the average number of people that serve on a commission or board?
Like, how many?
At least like four?
Probably between eight to twelve, maybe?
Seven to twelve. Jose's five. I think the events committee's nine.
Okay, so, okay, because I guess my thought process with this was, you know, we all have, we have four districts and we, we have the mayor. My thought process was making sure at least one person was from each district and, you know, mayor having an appointee, to make sure every district feels represented. Because at Municipal Association Conference, you know, I spoke to some council people and they were telling me some problems they were having in their cities was some people in their districts were not aware of some of the things these commissions or boards were proving up, and they had no representation. Now, saying that's happening here in Casey, but we do have four districts and a mayor, so I don't see why, we couldn't at least make sure every board or commission has at least one person from that, from a district and a mayor, so we make sure everyone feels we're doing our job, make sure representation for each district and the mayor is there.
I think that's, that's your role as a council member, is to go out to your district and say, please come and, and volunteer and apply for these boards and commissions.
Yes, that is true, but I want to make sure that they don't get filled, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's not completely filled until, so, let's say, one of our commissions or boards has five people and one person, and you know, there's one more spot, but someone from Hunter's District hasn't applies and there's already, there's no one from my district, that position doesn't get filled because that's not for someone from my district to fill, which I will fight to fill that position, that is my job, but we, we make sure every district has representation.
I would be curious to know what it looks like now. I mean, there probably is.
Well, yeah, maybe everything, every, every is represented, but.
No, I know in the past, on the events committee, we had a problem or an issue with almost everyone in that committee lived in the avenues. And they were aware of that and they said, we can't do this, we've got to have more diversity, we can't just have, add new structures in here.
If I can turn that around, just a little birthday man. I, I'm betting, like the city managers just said, I, I bet we are mirroring the majority of the city, but I know this without, without a doubt, I know that if there's three applicants and there's a board or a commission that does not have your district represented and you were to say, Tim, I'd really like for you to support this person because my district's not represented, I, I'm going to say you're right, because we do want the entire city to be represented, and maybe that's better of a direction to go, because they all have, some have four, some have eighteen, some, I'm exaggerating now, but they're all different. But what I'm saying is I feel what you're saying, but I don't know that a process would, would cure it, but what we need to do is just try to make sure that we're representing those we serve and that we mirror those we serve.
I got you. Well, well, Mindy, any way you can see just all, all of them, how we're represented, just to, so then we, we, so then we can know, I, I know you do a great job of letting us know what's available, but just so then we know, hey, there's no one from Bishop Two on this committee, you know, there's an opening or two openings, so, and I appreciate that.
Mindy, you do such a good job of getting an application and kind of getting it out to us sometimes. Do we, and it may be there already, it may even be on a line that I'm not seeing, but we like to say, two weeks for review before your nomination is considered, because we are talking processes now, and, you know, for you to get and do some records check and things like that, do we need to say, submit it and two weeks later it's up for nomination? Because there's no way you can get something on a Friday afternoon, send it out to us, and then Tuesday is on the agenda.
I think you'd almost have to, if we decide to do something more like this, or if y'all decide to do something more like this.
I just, I want us to take that into consideration, because I don't want to build your work and you're like, oh, God, I'm trying to get all this done for the next.
Would it make it easier just to have the second council meeting of the month, be whenever we look at those?
I remember we're going to have second council meetings of the month, because all the time.
Don't have to have them, is what I think the mayor's saying, I, or the first one.
I mean, that way it's split up enough, because, you know, is that, are you talking about a lot tighter of a timeline? I'm just saying, so it's split up enough to meet that every time, so it's not, you know, you get four or five days to review, but I guess.
I'm just saying, I, I think personally, it needs to be to the clerk's desk two weeks prior to any nomination, period. Because, because if we were to say the first, or the meeting, the first Tuesdays of the month and it comes in the last week of the month before, that's not two weeks, and that's still going to put a pressure on it.
And I'm going to have to hop out for a call, but something I wanted to flag before I did, that I saw today, when looking through a lot of the appointment applications for other cities around the state, and I don't know that it's something we want to do, but I know that most of the committees are open to people from the public to come sit in on and, and watch. And so, a question that was asked on a number of them, including Lexington and Irma right here in the Midlands, was how many meetings they've attended in the past six months, if any? Just take that into consideration, if they sat in on one or not, just kind of show maybe some initiative that they've already started to attend them and, and see what's going on, but I'm open to, to not, if anyone mentioned that, I saw it multiple times today when I was looking through. I don't think it's a terrible idea, but just a thought.
I mean, to that point, all of our commission and board meetings are public.
They're public.
Mindy, any suggestions that you have for us?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Larry, don't you put me on the spot?
That's all right.
No, I really don't. I will say that most people don't typically attend our meetings, like, from the public. Very rarely. I've had a few attend the events committee.
I've seen a couple of people over and just said, hey, if you're going to put application in, feel free to go.
Yeah, we would love that, but they don't typically do it.
Yeah, well, we don't have to include that, just wanted to point out.
Mindy, I hate to put you on the spot with this one, but if you can remember off the top of your head, I'm, I'm just curious, because I think we do a good job, Tracy assigns a staff member to be that liaison for most, for all boards and commissions, right?
Yes, sir.
Like Kay, for the Public Safety Foundation, right? And others, do they ever rotate, or do they remain consistent?
In many ways, that they're, it's based on their position of expertise, you know, Monique is our liaison with the Planning Commission, that's her job, per se.
Kay's been on Public Safety since its inception.
Right. And does a great job.
That's a passion for her, actually.
And actually, in addition to Kay on the Public Safety Foundation, we have Jim. So, we have multiple staff members on some of these boards. I'm the liaison for the Beautification Foundation, because by their bylaws, I have to be on it. Mike's for some, it'd be hard to rotate if you're trying to keep it to that person's area of expertise.
They know that if they wanted to rotate off, they could.
In some ways, it's actually a part of their job description.
Okay.
Monique, Monique manages the Planning Commission meetings, that's part of her job. She's actually technically the secretary by their bylaws. Most, I think in most cases, other than where we're named to it by their bylaws, it's to the appropriate staff member that that's their area of expertise, if you made an idea. I mean, well, I mean.
Well, like the events committee.
That's.
Code enforcement goes to the neighbor meetings, because, you know, they hear a lot of the code enforcement issues.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really, it's more, most of them are more professional job descriptions.
And that's good to have them in there, because the questions that are posed, you've got an expert in the field in there.
Yes, for what is any appeals in Planning Commission, that's a planning heavy, if you think about the nature of the agenda, you know, so Monique is there as a subject matter expert and our liaison. Mike is usually there, too, and we try to double in a couple of them. Yeah, Mike and Kay at the Public Safety Foundations, I'm at the Beautification, Mindy and Amanda Tag Team, Events, Museum Commission is Andy, Mike's often there, again, because that's their, that's Andy's job part of it, so. Yeah, they're usually pretty role and job description specific, because there's, there's subject matter that those folks offer.
Okay, thanks. That was more just trying to make sure I totally understood. Mayor, the only other thing I wanted, and I don't know that anybody has an appetite for this, but we don't go down this road too often, so let's think about it, is reappointments. We've made the comment from this council in the last couple of years, that we're very fortunate to have people wanting to serve, and I don't know that that's always been that way, but if we just complete reappointing, 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 and people don't have quote unquote term limits, do others ever get an opportunity to serve? Is this something that we want to discuss? Do we feel that's not a challenge at this point?
Maybe it would be helpful for us to look at longevity of, like, how many people do we have in those positions?
The composition of the particular board or commission.
Maybe if we get some data on that to see over our boards and commissions, how many have turned over in the last three years, five, you know, let's look at.
Okay. Let's do that. No, it does, it helps a lot. Again, I said, it's been a long time since we've gone down this road, so while we're going down it, let's at least think about it, but I think you've got a good point. Let's take a look at what the compositions are. If it looks like, oh, my gosh, that's something that we need to look at, we can, we can look at it. If not, move, move on. But we've been very, very, very fortunate with some long tenured people, and I appreciate the time that they've served, and they probably served during times that others were like, man, that's, that's a lot of work, but we have other people who are willing now, so to that point, it's discussion.
We have been compiling that so we could recognize some of those longstanding ones.
Good, good, good.
So, I, I think there's a lot of very, very longstanding.
People who've really committed a lot of time.
But not as much as there used to be.
No, it's not.
I think we've got maybe a handful anymore. For a long time, we really did have a lot of people, because we would do five-year, ten-year, fifteen, twenty year recognition in council meetings. Yeah, we would do that once a year, but, uh, yes, it would be good to look and see what we have. I think that's a great idea, to look at that, to see, do we need, do we need turnovers on that? But I would handle that separately in this.
Yeah.
So that we can, we can move forward on this for staff's sanity. Let's, I mean, so, if y'all feel good about that, all right, it sounds like, do we like all of these questions?
The ones that you've highlighted?
Yeah.
I, I think, and I don't know, maybe, maybe we need to read these out for some of you guys who probably haven't seen them here, but what do you want to serve on the city of Casey's board, or why do you want to serve on the city of Casey's Board or Commission? The second highlight was what specific contributions do you hope to make? The third highlight was what community topics concern you that relate to this board or commission? It's a really good one there, Mayor.
And then they say none, but there may be something that just gives us some more insight.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly, exactly. And then the fourth one, what experience, training qualifications do you have for this particular board or commission? And again, they may not have any, but they're a citizen of Casey, and therefore we take that into consideration, but, but some boards may have that particular need, and, and if they've got that need, that's good. So, Mayor, these, these four that are highlighted, I'm, I'm certainly for those. The one that wasn't highlighted is, are you a current member of the board? We already know that, we don't have to have them to be able to outline that. And any volunteer experience, usually we know that.
That's effectively currently on our application, so.
All right, so if y'all like these four questions, we like asking Public Safety to do a check of within our system of any police matters that we need to know about, was that everything?
We're going to do a two-week.
The two-week.
Two weeks prior to submission for nomination. Is that, is that good for you, Mindy? I mean, we're talking like we're having to do this work, but we're not.
Yeah, so it's, it's y'all, Chief, really, is that a good?
That's what I was going to ask, Chief, how quickly the background checks are.
I would say two things, is make sure that the application clearly says that their research is going to be done on the background, so we don't, so if he comes back later and says that they were single out secondly, I don't see that. We're just doing an internal in-house search, and we're not doing a public index search, we're not, I mean, as long as we're, we have to define what's the search, is it just an internal records check?
Just internal, yeah.
So, then that should be pretty simple to put in the system.
Do you, Chief, do you think just a statement saying there will be that check, or do you want them to check saying, I acknowledge that this will be, okay, so I check that this.
As long as we're just doing a records check, and we're not doing a background check, then we're okay, we can do that, as long as we're making that application. If we start to dig deeper, then we've got some limitations.
Then let's, let's certainly look at how, you know, that is written out, because right now, it says, have you ever been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor other than a minor traffic violation? Yes or no, period, stops there. So, to your point.
So, if we're, if we're trying to look to verify if they're being honest about that, then we need to, then we actually need to say, you're agreeing to a background check, and then we're take, we're going to have to take it to another level for two weeks.
They probably have sign released, is what I need to do.
But I'm hearing two different things.
No, we're just talking about the internal.
If it's just internal, if you're just doing an internal record search, I would just say that below that should be, we're going to do a records, internal record search to see if Casey could determine X, Y, or Z.
So, just to check about, I am acknowledging that I am aware that.
Internal records check will be completed.
And, and that it's public, and that that information will be public information?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so then two weeks on that?
That should be, that should be, we're just doing that.
I think, I think you let us, one, revise the application.
Yeah.
And talk through that system. I mean, I, I, you know, ideally, what you want us to do is just get it on the next feasible meeting date, you know, see how long it takes. If you can do it quickly, that's really the turnaround.
Doesn't need two weeks.
Maybe, yeah, I think you just, let us, let us talk through it offline, now we've got your direction, let us revise the application, and let me just shoot you all a time or an email, it's, it's very likely we can, you're right, if we got it on Friday, it already wouldn't, it wouldn't already be in our, you know, it wouldn't, it already wouldn't be in our pocket for the next meeting. So, I think it'll work out, that as long as it doesn't take, Chief, two weeks, we can do it, we can turn it around by the next reasonable meeting.
So, then the last, so, we know you're up.
You just had an opportunity to get two weeks to do it.
You punted it, so now you have.
But we'll talk, let us talk about it in Charlotte, just to make sure we're not taxing ourselves.
Well, but, and, and thank you, Council, for wanting to be thoughtful about staff time and what that takes, so that's awesome. Yes, y'all, y'all let us know on that. All right, last, last nuance with that, then, is are we doing this for new applications? Or are we saying this is retroactive?
It's a good question. I know, I should pop back in.
Yeah, you didn't miss anything.
Danny, can, can we kick this off now? Should we acknowledge what has been out there?
I, I think my short answer would have to be, you can do it either way you want. You have a lot of discretion.
I love an attorney.
Thank you. In picking committee and board members, you have discretion in discharge, you know, some reason or no reason, so this information could be helpful to you if you want to take it retroactive.
Mayor, I'm actually, you know, as we said when we kicked this off, this is not broken. I, I think the enhancements that we're making are really good. My particular thought, and certainly yield to rest of council, I don't think we need to be retroactive. Tonight, we have member applications for review, and certainly we can, we can move forward, and from this point forward.
And new applications, use the new form and go through the internal check.
What, what's your thought?
I'm fine with that.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Awesome.
We don't have to do, like, motions or anything, do we?
No.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I just.
Birthday man.
Good. We're on to general projects update.
I'm going to breeze through this, you know, you might get the sense that some of what I've put on this agenda is kind of a myriad of things, you know, we're just trying to think, I'm trying to get you prepared for budget season. And so, Kelly coming up next, I think is a unique opportunity for us, we've never had the ability to do, Dr. Talis with great timing on the rape study, I'm, I'm just going to give you kind of a wow factor. Your city is working on a lot of projects. This is four pages of projects that are above and beyond our daily day-to-day operations. I don't want to go into details, I don't have detailed updates for you on everything, but just know, we have a lot of things in progress. We're managing the ground field grant, five hundred thousand dollars, managing the skip grant, ten million, trying to conclude our Knott's Sabbath street skate.
We're making a bigger.
No, I'm sure they want you to.
All right. The easiest thing to do justice.
Oh, there you go, there you go, okay. Yeah, building a kayak launch, again, finishing Knott's Sabbath street skate, upgrades to Kelly Jones Park, working on improving our parks and some recreation work.
I'm, I'm.
Taylor Street, center of place, we're constantly working on our city properties, we need to do some paving, we need some new gates at our, our facilities, we need space, we need mobile offices, we've just finished upgrades here in Chambers. We've just finished upgrades here in Chambers. Finished upgrades at the Hill. We have, we have started an ongoing review of the conditions of all of our facilities. We're constantly maintaining our riverwalk. We're looking at new signage for the riverwalk and we've just done some signage. We're trying to improve our employee affairs. We're updating our employee handbook, updating our leave policy. Good benefits review. We're updating our onboarding, our management. We want to look at consolidated fire dispatch. We know we're dealing with the county road maintenance agreement, stationary learning for our firehouse. We're just starting our 525 budget. We need prosecutors. We need to purchase police radios. We have tons of grant activity going on. Have y'all been to others' mention, right? We have, there are 10 grant applications that are pending right now. We are writing and winning and managing grants all the time. We have a bed plan. This is on top of Mindy and Amanda's everyday expectations for what they do for our city. Fall Fest, Hora, Christmas in Casey. We always want to add because we know we're doing a good job with our, with our beds and we know that people want to come hang out with us. We have FOIA's coming in all the time. We have a loading zoning lawsuit on M Avenue. We have several sidewalk projects, one on Frank Street with SC DOT. Another one for our county IGA projects. We're tracking franchise payments. We're undergoing a rate study. You just saw how detailed that was by our folks that were just here. We're completing Axon and Smart Pop. We're getting ready to do a huge gateway project on Airport Boulevard. Years in the making, but this is just extra awesome work that we're doing. 1,000-year history for our visitor center has to get out of the ground underway. Redistricting, we know we still need to do. We need to get it started on our code rewrite. We have ongoing SC DOT maintenance issues. We've heard several news, signs in our city are terrible. The appearance of our roads sometimes are not great. This is all DOT. This is us always working to pester the DOT to do this work. We're implementing new police software. A lot of these things are based on your approvals to purchase these things. Grateful for that. So it's a lot of work. Legislature affairs, Nancy's working hard with her to make sure we have a good capital plan for her, her department. Something we've not really had. We have future ideas that staff is always working on. Budget book, you know, what do we do with our I-77 gateway? We have a tree canopy study. What's the next step there? We need some new software. We need to have a development strategy. We need to talk to you about how we do more with our TIC, tax increment financing district. When you're new to City Hall. What do we do with transit long range? Got native yard ordinance ideas, taking property ideas. How do we process events better throughout our city? What do we do about the scrapyard?
Housing. It's not ours.
What's that?
That's not ours.
Not ours, but it is a pain and we know it comes, it's our play.
We love you, Chief.
Way of hiding signage, comp plan update, you know, museums doing some great work over there. It's new. And let's just, let's just say for the record, we manage a museum. This is not normal day-to-day operations for a city, but we love it. It's just extra work. Raymond Hill planning, we've got a small area planned that we're working with COG to look at that area. Do we want to Baileyville? Do we want to store preservation standards? Of course, we've got major developments like Southern Commons. Do we want to develop or be a part of Main Street USA? We need to up our marketing. Do a better job of telling people what, what we do in our city and what we do with the tax dollars. We're always monitoring our air duties. Do we want to look into anti-station? So, you know, I, I can't go into detail on all of these. It would take a day. But I just wanted to share with you sort of the breadth of all that we have going on outside of day-to-day operations, quality of service and, and quality of life for your citizens, managing staff, managing our assets and managing the dollars. So I wanted to share that with you as you think about going into the budget season, everything we add to that, everything you come to us with as an idea. Let's talk them through. We're excited about new ideas, but no. You said perfectly well a couple of meetings ago, what's the capacity of us to take on some big things.
There's the bandwidth.
When I come to you and I say, love it, tell me how to prioritize that. I'm gonna do more and more of that.
Good. Yeah, I think you need to. Two things, can you forward that list to us just so that we can look through it and say, hey, I'm interested in this. Can you tell me a little more about it? Cause you're right.
I want to be telling you more about it on a regular basis and that's why our meetings together are better for that.
Yeah, cause look at that list. I don't want to look, get, you know, for everyone. The second, the second thing was you were talking a lot about software, which made me remember we had paid a lot of money for our human resources, time, sheet, software. How's that going?
We had to cancel that, remember? That did not go well.
That is correct.
We, we reported out to you that we had to cancel that because they did not perform what we wanted them to do.
Cancel it? Get our money back?
Uh, most of it. We argued that a good bit, but we're looking at new ones. We just, we haven't had the capacity to entertain new ones for.
So that might just go in the budget to do something with it.
A good chunk of it, yes, sir.
We've got a couple of good contacts we're doing right now, looking at it. So it's not off the table for sure.
So the project by, for way, climbing outdoors, will that be finished this spring?
We're trying to get that off the ground.
Launch, still working on it.
A kayak launch and we'll have a noodle takeout or whatever you wanna call it. I call it a noodle takeout.
And is this behind the?
Kelly Jones.
One will be Kelly Jones. That's where, coming outdoors, we'll, we'll have a pull-out or step-out. And then we're getting underway with the kayak launch at the boat lane.
Take out the Cheerios.
Noodles, Cheerios.
The inner chips.
I just want to take a moment to really let you see the breadth of that. This is what we're kind of juggling every day. And a lot of it's because of your awarded work. Thank you. A lot of it's grant work. You know, just things that we take on. We are not a small, quiet city. Contrary to Lawrence thinking we were a suburb, so thank you for letting me do that. I just wanted to.
Well, I know you, you were talking to council members once or two, so thank you for doing that. I know that first taken advantage.
Yeah. Getting in a routine.
I love you. I love me with Tracy.
So, great.
Excellent question.
That's all I have for updates on projects.
But you'll get that to us so we can look at it.
Sure.
I-77 gateway overlay.
I would ask that we skip that. I, we.
All right, budget preparation.
Yeah, I'm gonna actually turn this over.
Skip that.
Well, I wanted to do it.
Just keep.
I say we're, we're standing her presentation up now.
Yeah, we're standing up, Kelly. I mentioned just a minute ago, this workshop session is really, you know, I envisioned it as an opportunity to do something we haven't done before. We are embarking on our budget, what I would call the busiest time of year. I now just call it normal. But what I wanted and what I asked Kelly to do, your CFO, is to pull together some analytics, you know, just to give you a, something to segue into the budget season. You know, you're gonna have your utility work session where you hear from those departments about their specific needs and requires. To do it with general funds as well. This is her opportunity to kind of give you a lay of the land. It's not necessarily where we are like today. It's what you need to think about and what you can take in as tools with you throughout the budget process. She's gonna start high, national, state trends, and then she's gonna get to some city-specific stuff, even to talk to you about what the mill is, what it means, all of our revenue sources, how they look, how they come together. You know, description of our fund balances. I'm really sorry. Councilman Carter isn't here. This is something he's really interested in. Of course, I know he's gonna redo this. But she's put a lot of information together. It's also kind of cool timing. I know some of you saw a presentation from an economist from the Federal Reserve at the H-Lab meeting. Well, we had already asked her to do this. So I think you're gonna really, I'm, I'm glad you liked that so much. I did too. She's gonna, she's gonna reiterate some of those things. So they'll be familiar to some of you. Good information for the rest of us. But she's gonna go to that high level so you can kind of get a prime mark of relevancy, not, not as much as she did. But what's relevant to us and then bring it down low. So. She's gonna do it as quickly as she can, but stop her if you have questions. There is a lot of info. Of course, we'll share it with you. Again, it's just to get us rolling into budget season, Sarah.
Correct. Bear with me. I might not be as good of a presenter as your Legislative Action Day person was, but I will do my best.
But you're ours, really.
You're ours. That's very nice, yes.
So like Tracy said, we're gonna start with state and national economy. A lot of this is gonna be a review from your Legislative Action Day. So I will review these kind of quickly for the betterment of our time and so we can get this thing moving on, so we can get into more of our local information. First thing that I wanted to make sure that everybody knows, this is just a comparison of the US versus South Carolina unemployment rates. As of December 23, the takeaway I want you to leave with is that the South Carolina rate was actually 3% unemployment, which was below the national rate of 3.7%. I always actually find this interesting and maybe it's just me. But if you follow this trend line, this is the number of unemployed job seekers per job opening in both the US and South Carolina. I find it interesting because you can see the 2008 and 2009 economic downturn. You can also see the 2020 COVID downturn, where more people were unemployed and in the job market. If you look all the way to the far right, you're gonna see what that represents in both the US and the state is that there is less than one unemployed job seeker for every job opening, national and in this state. Competition is key. We are not only running up against state and local other governments, but we're also running up against the private sector. Just another item of note is this is a representation of private versus local government, state and local government wage and salary growth. This is from 2010 to 2023. If you'll notice, the two cross on the far left in 2010. At that point, government wage growth exceeded private sector growth. That held not true all the way from 2011 to 2023-ish. And about mid-2023, we crossed. So for the first time since 2010, your local government, your state and local government wage growth has exceeded your private sector. Again, can you correlate that back to us having to compete with the private sector? My guess is probably yes. As we're moving on to mortgage rates, this is conventional mortgage rates. This is a 30-year fixed from 1980 and you can follow that all the way to 2024 with an estimate through about halfway of 2024. We did skyrocket around October 2023 at 7.62%. We are seeing that downturn. We are coming back down. We, Wells Fargo is anticipating it to level out somewhere right above the 6% and hold steady there for the forecast horizon.
You said skyrocket, but I still remember that left-hand side of that.
Right. That is definitely.
Not everybody remembers that.
But that's not even remotely close to what it was.
That is crazy.
And then of course, I, I figure in tax 88 or act 388 in there as well. So all of it is just, I, I'm an analytics person, so excuse me. Another one that is important to us, you've heard Lawrence mention it, you've actually heard almost everybody mention it, is inflation. This is a view from January 18. It is forecasting through about June of 2025. As of right now, it looks like they are expected for the CPI to downturn, which it already has, but rests somewhere right above the 2% level. And it's going to anticipate and hold steady right at that point. The problem that we are having with that is we're not seeing the lowering of costs with the lowering of CPI. But we have no, nothing really we can do about the private and how much we get billed until they reflect the CPI downturn. So just interesting of note, sorry, I am moving through these fast, so. All right, so when we're getting into the state and state revenues and the state budget, some of the interesting things that you will see that also reflected in Casey are reflected on the state budget as well. This is the state general fund budget across FY 2013 to FY 2025 estimated. You will see the influx of money right along the right-hand side in FY 23 and FY 24. Most of that is due to your ARPA funding. The city had the same max inflow. So, but they are looking at 2025, having the gray being their recurring funds decrease back to normal levels. They are putting more money in their capital reserve, which is what we have been very seriously considering doing as well. And the blue is their general fund recurring budget, which is coming down from last year, but still relatively high. Most of that was because of the income tax decrease. The local government fund is also an impact on the city. The blue line that you see running from left to right, that is the statutory formula set for fully funding the local government fund. The bar graph that you see along the bottom, you will see those are the actual fundings that local governments got from the fund. Any differences between the two is when they don't fully fund the local government fund per the statutory formula. So we are looking, they are doing a forecast for 2024 and 2025. They are anticipating a 5% increase due to the state budget increasing. And they are anticipating fully funding the formula for both years. Right.
But we gotta stay on top of that. Don't, don't take the eye off it.
Um, so it's still early in the budget process. Your finance works diligently to track as many federal-state budget provisos as we possibly can. We actually have a Podcast Friday where we listen to a lot of podcasts together out in the open in our offices while we work so that we can try to stay in touch with what's going on on the State House. Just a couple of items to note, the governor's executive budget summary indicates that there's gonna be another 9.7% increase to the employer portion of health insurance. This is on top of at least two past pretty large increases to employer portions. It did not indicate how much, if any, was gonna be passed to the participating employers. So we are still waiting on that, but we do have the potential for a 9.7% increase on that. It's just a financial consideration for us to think about when we plan for the budget.
Can I pause you there?
Absolutely.
Just to give you a chance to breathe to.
I talked.
No, no, it's good. So that 9.7 is in the executive budget and it's anticipated for it to go up 9.7 for those participating agencies.
Correct.
But with that 9.7, how much does the city pay of it and how much would an employee have to pay of it, correct?
The city does have some indication of whether or not, so the city right now chooses to pay for the employee. That is the city's choice. Other than that, that's really the only city choice that we have. We are mandated by the health insurance, by PIBA, to pay whatever they deem necessary.
Okay, so they said that.
They said that, unless we want to leave PIBA.
And we have a chart later to show you how that.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, you'll see a lot later.
Didn't we do that years ago?
We joined PIBA in 2018.
In two PIBA from another.
Sigma.
Sigma, I think.
Sigma, yeah. I can't remember who that was, okay.
We saved.
It's still been, even with these increases.
It is?
Very popular.
Wow, that's a lot though.
More on the socioeconomic side of things would be a budget proviso that I found interesting. It is budget proviso 108.18, which closes the South Carolina retirement system to new members, new hires affected December 31, 2024. This is a proposed budget proviso and has not gone anywhere past the proposal. But it is something to consider. It does not mention the police officer retirement system. It only mentions the South Carolina retirement system and that would close new hires from SERS and would move them to the optional retirement plan that the state offers.
Sure. You, you, we used to define close, they would stop SERS.
For new people coming in, yes. And we.
Well, going out on the market with your 401s and whatnot, there are many companies locally. There's many companies locally that have already tried to find how they could do that.
Yes.
And have.
It's definitely, it'll be interesting to watch, to see how far this gets.
Yeah.
But it's just one that I found not necessarily financially impactful, but socially impactful to the city.
Testing you here because you're doing such a good job. But do you know who that proviso was introduced by?
I do not off the top of my head. I have this.
It's in the, it's in the governor's executive budget. That particular proviso was?
I do believe so, yes. I do believe you're right.
Okay, good, thanks.
Also dictated by the state budget is our milage, milage rate increase limitation. We are limited to our milage increases by two components. One of them is the inflation component. RFA has already, excuse me, the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office has already come out with the 2024, 2025 CPI increase component of 4.12%. So we've already factored that in. We will not get the population component until May 2024. We do have to wait for RFA. It is mandated that we only receive population data from them.
That's why you see us do milage calculations sort of at the very last.
Yeah, we have to wait for that second component. Another thing that, just to note, we've talked about this before. This is the employer share of the South Carolina retirement system and the police officer retirement system. This is another impact to the city. This shows 2013 to 2024. You will see how much the city has had to contribute for. You will see how much the city has had to contribute for each employee. These are based on percentages. For each employee from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty four, SDRS's contribution rate today is eighteen point five six percent. And the police officer retirement system is twenty one point two four percent. And we are still waiting on PIBA to recommend their budget so that we can see if there's gonna be any increases. I don't have that information to share today.
And, and just, just from my knowledge, does our city like match?
That is our contribution rate.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. A certain amount comes out of the employees.
Another financial impact to us is also related to PIBA is the health insurance contribution rate that we do. Uh, this is just the financial impact. This is per employee based on the category that, of health insurance that you receive. So at the bottom, you'll see employee only. Right above that is employee with a child. Above that is employee plus spouse and at the very top, employee family. This is per person on an annual basis. Um, you will see that we're removed from twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen was kind of a given. That's when we joined PIBA to all the way to today. These are growing costs, um, to us and it's something that we have to consider. Again, I don't have PIBA's recommended or requested budget to know what that looks like for next year. Another thing that we always have to be mindful of is our insurance. Insurance as part of our property insurance, our vehicle insurance, our liability insurance, et cetera, so forth and so on. Um, these are also run by the state. We are under SMURF for these. Um, municipal insurance risk financing. You can see actually from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty four, those have more than doubled in cost. Something that we just have to, it's another budgetary, another financial impact that we have to plan for. And these are reached through the end of twenty twenty four. These run on a calendar year. Focusing more on the city's general fund. The city has several revenue sources. These are just depicting twenty twenty four, the most recent budget that was passed. These are indicative of just the diversity of, we try to keep the general fund portfolio. So in here, you'll see that property taxes came in at four point nine. That is twenty five percent of the total revenues for the year. You can watch those come down. Franchise fees, I'm not gonna read them all to you. You guys will get this, I think, later. Um, all the way down to a total revenue source of nineteen million dollars. I do have two starred. Those are property taxes and program revenues. Those are only because we're gonna talk about those more later. Um, so.
Kelly's in a good spot to talk about the twenty five percent diversification.
Absolutely, if you want to. So one of the things that we, we try to make sure that we are very aware of is that we do not sit the majority of our budget on property taxes. It's a best practice scenario where you try to diversify. Your real estate market, your property tax market fluctuates with time. So normal business processes, we do try to stick to around a twenty five percent property tax. Um, how much we depend on it and that's it. Because we wanna focus more on, I guess, making sure that we have a stable revenue source across multiple sources. If that makes sense. So we are right on the money for twenty twenty four. It doesn't always come out perfect. But twenty twenty four actually came out perfect.
Clean, Kelly.
At twenty five percent. You'll see it move maybe twenty six, twenty four, but for the most part, our, our, we do try to target for twenty twenty, or for twenty five.
And, and not everybody does that. And I think that's.
That is correct.
Our kudos to and our staff for finding those other sources. Now, you told, you heard me last year tell you we had a heavy grant year.
Yes.
So I don't want us to always think that our budget is nineteen point seven million, because we won't always have those grant opportunities. But we spend so much time seeking them and so much effort seeking them, so we can keep that twenty five percent around there. It's just a good practice.
Yeah, even if you look at twenty twenty four, grants accounted for eleven percent of our total revenues. Pretty dang amazing. Can't wait to show you next year. Alright, getting into millages, um, this is just kind of the basics of a millage. Obviously, I'm, I'm not gonna read everything on this. This is just some highlights for you. Uh, the millage is the tax rate set, set by the city of Casey. The value of a mill is the amount of property tax revenue one mill will generate. Basically, it is one one thousandth of the assessed value of the property. The millage rate increase limitation is set by code six one three twenty, letting us know that we have only two sources, components, for lack of a better word, in which we can inflate our millage rate if needed. Uh, just a side note that that six one three twenty only applies to the city's general fund operating millage if the city were to ever issue geo, uh, general obligation debt. It does not apply to debt service debt, um, millage. Property taxes are calculated based on your appraised value or your fair market value of your home times your ratio. Your ratio could fluctuate. If you live in your home permanently, it can be four percent. Maybe it's a rental, it'd be six percent. It does fluctuate, um, and then times our millage rate. So looking at Casey's millage, Casey's current millage is fifty eight point one mills. The assessed value according to the Lexington County Auditor for twenty twenty four is sixty four million and some change. If you, from the previous slide, you divide that by the thousand, one mill in Casey is worth sixty four thousand one fifty eight twenty. Just trying to get a gauge on how much tax revenue that brings in, you can take that times the number of mills that Casey charges. And that comes to total tax revenues just based on residential and business, doesn't include a couple of the odd property taxes. But it comes to three point seven million dollars. Basically, I just wanna be able to show you that when you're looking at property taxes, yes, it's important to pay attention to your mills. But it's also very, very important to pay attention to your total assessed value within your city limits, which then would equate to the value of one mill within your city. So if you were to live in a two thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollar fair market home and it is a full-time legal residence, if you do the math, then it comes to about four sixty, four eighty annually.
What's that figure?
For a two hundred thousand dollar home, four sixty, four eighty. That is before any credits, by the way. I didn't wanna complicate matters.
Thirty eight dollars a month. Thirty eight dollars a month.
A lot of people like to use a hundred thousand dollar home. I thought a two hundred thousand dollar home was more representative of real, reality.
Thirty eight dollars a month. That's amazing.
So, looking forward, like I said, you know, sometimes we, we will and we can let you know how much you can increase millage. Um, however, what I think is probably more beneficial and what the city can look at is paying more attention to the assessed value of the property owned in the city. So if you were to look at the screen right now, this is a comparison. This is assuming that you do not increase millage at all. All you do is put more, you create more of a tax base. You increase the assessed value within your city limits. So right now, at the top, we're sitting at sixty four million and some change, which brings in tax revenues of three point seven million dollars. If we were to increase that from sixty four to seventy million in our tax base, we would get three hundred and thirty nine thousand more dollars without impacting that two hundred thousand dollar homeowner. Same thing, if you keep on going up, seventy five million, you've now increased your total revenues over six hundred thousand, so on and so forth. I ended with ninety nine million on purpose because that's right around where West Columbia is sitting on their assessed value within their city limits. Um, if you were to do, if we were to get up to that point, no millage changes at all. You're looking at five point seven, so from, oops, sorry, from three point seven to five point seven.
So Kelly, to make sure I understand, you're saying if we didn't change the tax, what people were taxed, but we got more.
Correct.
Building, we got the buildings that have been dilapidated to become more viable, therefore assessed better.
Yes.
Then we can keep the tax burden off of our people and make our city lively. Nice, okay, I like it, thank you.
We, we came up with this idea pretty much yesterday to show you how.
Nice, yeah, that's really awesome.
That works. Um, and obviously that's things you can think about policy-wise as we look forward.
So we're about thirty thousand dollars, thirty, thirty, three hundred thousand dollars less than West Columbia.
Well, don't compare tax revenues, cause they have a different millage.
Correct. Yeah, they run seventy.
Sixty six or seventy two.
Seventy two with their debt service millage.
So we're fifty eight point one mills, there's seventy two mills.
Seventy, yeah, don't quote me on the point.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll tell you, just as an anecdote, what's interesting with West Columbia is that they have two mills. They have their general operating mill and then they have an, a bond coverage mill.
Correct.
Which does not count against their max by the state. Not many people have that bond coverage mill, but it's kinda interesting. I mean, it's an extra tax, but.
So our folks are paying a whole lot less in taxes than folks in West Columbia.
Less, I don't know.
But West Columbia is able to push that out across a wider assessed base than we can.
Right, on an individual impact, it's still.
Correct.
It is still higher, yeah.
Just a tidbit. Another thing that we wanna look at is program revenues. Program revenues, cause I don't wanna just speak as an accountant here. Uh, program revenues are revenues that we can uniquely identify the fee that we are charging related to the service that our citizens are receiving. Think about our hydrant fees, our sanitation fees. When our SROs go out and they do work outside of the city for the school and stuff like that, their special duty, that is counted as a program revenue. You can directly relate the fee that we charge someone to that service that they receive. So this is just a completely random sample of anybody that I could find with a sanitation fee. Um, and these are all over the board. They are actually in order by cost. The red line right through the middle, that is just the middle line of this random sample and nothing more. But that middle line is actually showing that for this random sample, the, the middle of the road is nineteen to twenty two dollars per month to be able to pay for sanitation service in those specific areas. You can see Casey is actually number three on this list at thirteen fifty.
Kelly, um, incidentally, that line is her and mine, not the cost statistic.
Not on purpose, not on purpose.
Um, what's not maybe obvious here is that a lot of places, it is in the millage.
That is correct, sorry, I should have put that one.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so, um, someone might ask, why do you, why does Casey charge a sanitation fee in lieu of charging it through property taxes? Right now, the city utilizes a user charge for sanitation in lieu of ad valorem tax because again, we can directly relate the level to, of service to the fee that you pay. And that's the reason why we do it. Um, council has, and that, they have jurisdiction, I'm being able to change that, just currently why we do it. The city is able to charge that sanitation fee directly to households that receive the service and not to anybody else who may not receive the service. However, there's pros of doing either one. The pros of sanitation through a millage, we have a bigger base. We, if we charge a millage instead of a fee, we can actually hit our entire sixty four million assessed property value instead of just the residential customers who use our sanitation service. Because our footprint got bigger on our revenue side, we could increase our revenues. The city or, the city residents who receive the service would no longer see that additional fee on their utility bill. The pros of a sanitation, uh, charged through a fee, the average citizen will actually pay less annually. A fluctuating market economy will not cause the same fluctuations in the amount paid for sanitation. Think about the har- housing market the past few years. Housing markets went crazy, which also means that if your fee is a millage, your fee fluctuated with that value of your home. As it went up, as it went down, your fee is gonna fluctuate, but as a fee for us, we stayed flat. It doesn't matter if your home is worth two thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollars today and two ten tomorrow, the fee is the fee. You won't be charged more if you own more property in Casey. If you add a millage for the fee, you are essentially charging every single person for every property that they own. So we're charging you for your home, your boat. Do you have multiple cars? Do you own a business in Casey? We will get to hit that millage on every single property that you have individually. Uh, let's see, properties that don't receive the service, AKA businesses, don't actually have to pay for the service when it's a fee. When it's a millage, they will.
So before you move on.
Yep.
What's, what we need to, what we need to analyze and research for you, I don't wanna kid you and say that our fee covers the sanitation department. It does not.
It does not.
So we need to look at that gap and start to analyze that as we move forward.
And you gave us a recommendation last year to increase it.
And even then, it wasn't hitting it, but, um, just know that we are in fact supplementing our sanitation fee with some partial millage. I'm sorry.
No, you're absolutely fine. You're helping me to remember things. Local government fund, as we talked about before, but now we're bringing it down to the city level. We already talked about the five percent increase. What does that mean for Casey? We are actually moving under the fully funded formula from about three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars to three hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. They are assuming to keep the full funding of the formula and hopefully that stays. Um, we will be watching the state budget to see if any changes happen with that, but we don't anticipate that to change. Fee in lieu of taxes. This is a representation of the revenues that we receive from fiscal year fourteen to fiscal year twenty twenty three. Unfortunately, we don't have any additional data to help support the numbers. Tracy and I are working together to try to figure out a solution to be able to gain more reporting for these numbers.
In other words, we can't tell you what any of this means, except that we gotta check for this amount each year. So there are agreements out there via the county for, for properties to have fee in lieu of taxes. We don't know who they are, how much they are. We get one check a year. So we're trying to get that detail. Kelly used to work there. She knows it doesn't get, get given out very easily. Uh, it's took Councilman Carter about this. He had the same situation when he worked for the school board. Um, but what I do wanna note, by virtue of it coming down, doesn't mean we have a net loss. That may mean that new properties come back online to pay full taxes. It may not. I have no idea. We don't know what these agreements are about.
There's a bill in the House this year for it, whether it gets passed or not.
And we did mention that to our representatives. There is a bill, I doubt it goes through, but it's supposed to make that disclosure better, better known. So we showed this to you because it is a, a revenue source. We do get this, but I, I can't give you much more than what that squealing mind tells you, so.
And I am hoping that the bill comes for, even though chances might be slim, because the bill actually does have teeth saying that the counties have to release the information or else they lose funding. But there's other ones that I can talk more about. One being the local accommodations tax fund. This is just another separate revenue source that was enacted not too long ago. So you'll actually see this from twenty seventeen, just to keep relevant to relevant slides. But really in twenty nineteen, the local accommodation tax and its growth throughout time. The one thing that I do want you to know, or at least see for right now, is we do seem to have a little bit of a leveling out between twenty two and twenty three. Hopefully, we'll see more growth in twenty twenty four, but I don't have the data yet. Next one is hospitality tax. Hospitality tax, this is just a view of, the blue line is the hospitality tax revenues. And then the orange line is your hospitality tax fund balance. We're gonna talk about, more about fund balances in a minute. But for right now, this is just a view of showing the growth from FY twenty seventeen to FY twenty twenty three. We are pretty steady on our growth on the hospitality tax. Um, we are creating a, a little bit of a fund balance. However, we are working very diligently trying to get our fund balance down and put that into, uh, specific, in this instance, tourism-related projects.
Are we, are we concerned about the dip from restaurants like Henry's closing?
I.
Absolutely.
Yes, we are.
Projecting to keep the cushion or balance in that.
And I think Jim has already started the research of trying to figure out the impact.
Um, and, and let me note too, there is no problem with having a healthy H tax fund balance. And we have not proposed anything ourselves. It's just a possible revenue source for, for y'all as well.
Correct. So hospitality tax does do. Correct. So hospitality tax does do have an impact on the budget, however, we are, we are seeing steady growth in the area. State accommodations tax, don't let that little dip concern you. Um, we did do a true-up of all of our state accommodations tax money back in FY twenty-one to twenty-two to make sure that every money that we allocated was spent. We realized at that point that there was a little bit of money owed to our thirty percenters, our, um, how would you classify them, our advertising agencies. Uh, so we made sure that we did a true-up on all of that money. Um, so we do have a fund balance in there, it is also restricted for tourism, but it's minimal, um, even though it looks a little high, it's just, for the slide, it's only a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And that is another one that we, we want to keep as close to zero as humanly possible.
Yeah, state A ta- tax legislation doesn't necessarily want you to have a fund balance there, not the same as our tax.
Correct.
They want that spent.
As we move on to fund balances, um, this is just, I know this is a lot of words, so the, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the differences in fund balance classifications. We're going to go from the most restricted to the least restricted. The top being non-spendable, these are actually your prepaid expenses, your inventory, your self-insured, um, items that you have on your list. These are things that are not in a spendable form, so you cannot spend them. Next one down is restricted. This is limitations through legislation, federal legislation, state legislation, grantors, creditors, people have authority externally putting a restriction on your money. Committed is the next one down, that's when you as a council, through a formal action, commit that money for a specific pur- purpose. That is next. When you come down one more, assigned, that is also at the direction of city council or the designee, you might place on Tracy, uh, saying that the money is not necessarily restricted by a formal action, but it is intended for a specific purpose. And last but not least, the one that everybody loves, the unassigned fund balance. Literally, there's, there's not a calculation on the unassigned balance. You come up with your total fund balance and you start taking out the things that you can't spend. Whatever is left over is your unassigned fund balance. Um, so a fund balance on the governmental fund side, this looks, essentially, this is your life-to-date financial health of the fund that is running your governmental activities. Um, every year, money can come in, money can, can come out. But what's important to remember, and you kind of heard Lawrence mention it earlier, is a quote-unquote healthy fund balance is actually very healthy for the city. So some of the advantages to having a healthy fund balance is it provides cash flow for operating needs. Cash flows, we are cyclical in nature, so we have cash flows that are very delayed, but we have to function the entire several months before these revenues start coming in. Our fund balance helps us, you know, bridge that gap.
Let me give a quick example there. We don't receive our business licensing by state law until May of a year. We've started that budget year in July. So you saw that that's what ten, eleven percent of our general fund balance, we're paying bills between July and May without that money coming in. And we have a couple of those pinch points throughout the year.
Another one being property taxes, which really don't start coming in until about January, so you've lost about six months, right there. So your fund balance really does mitigate that gap.
It gets replenished, but it's just a.
Yeah, by the end of the year, it comes, it comes back to normal, but yeah, you'll see the dip of cash. And it's perfectly normal, given the state of, of the cyclical nature of our revenues. Another advantage to having a healthy fund balance is to mitigate risk of revenue shortfalls or unan- unanticipated large expenditures. I'm not going to say what an unanticipated large expenditure is, because I'm afraid I'm going to jinx something, so, I'm sure you can imagine. Um, it also ensures, you'll, you heard Lawrence say that earlier, it ensures a stable and reliable tax rate. We're not going to increase and decrease and increase and decrease your millage. We are going to find a steady spot so we can keep that steady over time. It also ensures the lower tax rates on general obligation debt. You heard Tracy allude earlier that, um, a nearby city has debt millage. The city does not have a debt millage, the city does not have general obligation debt at this time. However, if we did want to, for the purchase of a new city hall or whatever council wants to issue general go- obligation debt for, those creditors are going to look first at your fund balance to see your overall financial health. The healthier your fund balance, the lower your interest rate. It also allows council the flexibility to purchase needed items without issuing debt in a high-interest rate environment, AKA right now. Um, if we really need something, we can do what Lawrence referred to as PEGO. We get to fund what we need without dipping into additional debt while we wait on interest rates to hopefully decrease. It also allows council reserves to seek out grant funding. We can mention skip, we can mention all the grants that we're going after right now, but being able to have that fund balance as a healthy match requirement for these grants that we're going after is always beneficial, beneficial. So right now, you're looking at the general fund, unassigned fund balance, the one everybody loves. From twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty-four estimate. There is a little bit of a break in there between twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen, don't let it fool you, that is the issuance of your twenty-seventeen TIF bond. It is a cons- it's considered a governmental activity, so it is included in the percentage calculation. So we issued in twenty-seventeen, we got the proceeds from that TIF bond, which made our fund balance increase drastically. But then we immediately used those proceeds to fund the redevelopment projects for the TIF, so you saw it decrease drastically. That fifty percent line that you see, you've heard our auditors as they come up and they talk about six months of operating is healthy, that's all that blue line is. I'm making a visual indication of that six months of operating that the auditors keep mentioning. And then the orange, you will see our actual fund balance and how those two relate to each other. As of twenty-twenty-three, we were at fifty-three percent of governmental activity fund balance. So just a little over six months. Next one up is TIF, tax increment financing, it's just another financial tool that municipalities can use to take what could be a blighted district and redevelop it. This allows the municipality to incur debt in order to fund their redevelopment project area, the TIF. In theory, the TIF will generate redevelopment in the area, which will increase the assessment value in that incre- uh, area, which will incur revenues so that the city can pay off that debt. Just as a matter of history, in fiscal year two thousand and four, the city issued five million, a five million dollar TIF revenue bond to enhance the Casey Riverwalk and to create connections to local commercial businesses. In twenty-seventeen, right as that was paid off, uh, we issued the eight million dollar TIF revenue bond for the demolition and redevelopment along Knox Abbott, electrical utility improvements and streetscaping projects. This, thank you to our GIS manager, shout out to him, because I couldn't do this. Uh, he did create me an overlay currently of what our TIF district looks like. This is, you'll see Knox Abbott all the way down to the Casey Riverwalk and down. And this is just a visual representation of what is included in our redevelopment area. TIF assessments, by definition, a TIF, sh- you, you grab your base assessment here and you, you want to take what that value was at your base year and you want to redevelop that district and increase assessment values. Looking at this, exactly what is happening. All the way on the, um, far left is our base year, that is what the value of the property was, I believe in nineteen ninety-eight, when the property values were frozen. All the way to two thousand and twenty-three, and property values continue to grow in our TIF district. So that red arrow, that difference right there is what is helping to fund the debt service payments on the TIF line. There is, um, just to complicate just a little bit, sorry. There is a twenty-seventeen, that black vertical line, in twenty-seventeen, we did renegotiate or basically negotiate with Lexington County and School District Two to extend the TIF. And in that, they asked to have them both have a participation limit. Participation limits are not unusual, however, it does leave a little bit of money on the table, and that's what I'm just trying to visually represent here. Is that blue line that's going across the bottom, that is School District Two's participation limit. That's as much as they're willing to give. If you follow the green line, that is how much revenues are being generated by that TIF over time. Anything on the twenty-twenty-three side, anything from the green line to the blue line, goes back to School District Two. Every year.
Participating is an odd term. Does everybody understand what?
That's how much they're willing to give.
That's how much they're putting into the TIF, they get the rest back.
Correct.
They're benefiting off of our good growth.
Correct.
Correct.
So as that gap gets larger, we are refunding more money to the school district every year.
Off our good growth and our debt.
And just to put a number to a visual, in twenty-twenty-two, that refund amount was one point two million dollars. So basically, this is just another way of looking at the, almost the same information, but now I'm bringing in the county and not just the school district. The county does also have a participation limit. In twenty-seventeen, they defined that limit, in twenty-twenty, that agreement was renegotiated to add a little bit more to their participation limit. However, that orange line at the bottom, that is how much the city gets to keep off of the TIF. Representative of both the county and the school district's participation limit. The blue is what we could have had, if the no participation limit existed.
Again, a lot of TIFs have those caps.
Correct.
Ours is just fairly excessive and might be.
Because our TIF is doing so well. Another thing to keep in mind, and this is just something, uh, looking forward, as the next slide, we're going to, uh, talk about some how much money we have to spend on redevelopment within the TIF. So one thing that I will mention is that now the bottom, the orange, that is our debt service requirement on the TIF bond. That is money that we are going to have to restrict for debt service. The middle line, basically, is the money that we get to keep. So anything between the bottom and the middle line is our money to spend on redevelopment. Anything between the top and the middle is money that goes back to the school every single year. So we have basically the loss at the bottom and the gain, or the loss at the top and the gain at the bottom. Does that make sense? Same thing as before, this is just a look at TIF revenues and expenses, um, your TIF revenues are in blue. Again, you'll see that TIF bond creating that big spike, which immediately that, those revenues will fall, because that was a one-time non-recurring bond proceed. And your TIF expenses, you'll see all those also spiked the corresponding next year because of the spending of those TIF proceeds. But then you see both level up, coming to twenty-twenty-three. The TIF is holding a fund balance, again, we just learned about all the classifications on TIF, TIFs are restricted. They have to be used for the redevelopment district unless council chooses to do otherwise. There is an amount of money sitting in here, the fund balance, uh, right now is about five point two million at the end of twenty-twenty-three. I will recommend that council does restrict six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars annually to cover the debt service payments on the TIF bond. And also included in there would be a little bit of a coverage component, just in case. The TIF bond, by the way, is set to mature, um, will stop making payments on it in twenty-thirty-seven. I have no idea how fast that goes.
You're doing great, Kelly, awesome.
Alright, general fund versus enterprise fund. This is your general fund versus basically your utility fund, for that, lack of a better word. The two do not run the same, and you, you probably heard Lawrence kind of allude to this a little bit as well. The general fund on the left is a governmental fund, it is a type of governmental fund. Those funds are used to record and report resources of government day-to-day operations. Those are when we talk about fund balances. And I know it's, sometimes it's just a, a verbiage, a wording issue, but when you talk about a fund balance, those are related to your government activity types of funds, which include your general fund, your TIF, your ABCs, uh, your, uh, local option permits. Um, those are always the representative of the main operating functions of your city. On the other side of this, separate and on its own, is a, what we call a proprietary fund. If a fund is, hate to use the word fund, funded, if the fund is funded by user charges and fees directly related to the service, they are a proprietary fund. The utility fund is an example of a proprietary fund. Unfortunately, they don't, because everybody wants to make it difficult, they don't call a fund balance a fund balance. On the utility side, they call it a net position. Um, not only that, but they restrict it even more than the general fund does. So not only do I have to restrict my fund balance for debt service and the same things that I have to restrict general fund for, but now I have to restrict your net investment in your capital assets. That are, that's all your infrastructure. Millions and millions of dollars of your assets that I now have to restrict. My basic point in saying this, even though I gave you the unassigned fund balance on your government side, your general fund side, it's not relatable when you move to your utility side. What's important when you move to your utility side is, yes, you want some fund balance, you really do. But reserves are very, very, very important when you come to the utility side, and that is something that utilities does very well. Some of the major revenue sources, and this is just twenty-twenty-four, sewer sales, water sales, you can actually see the percentages of each. Those five categories account for ninety-six percent of the entire utility fund budget. Major revenue sources and those trends, uh, one thing to note, at the very, very top, that's your sewer. Our sewer footprint extends far past our city limits, far past our city limits. So it remains above the top, and it is a healthy, healthy, growing revenue source. Water, you can see is the blue right in the middle. Your capacity, that yellow one, it does fluctuate, and it is all dependent on your growth and your new developments and the timing of those new developments. But you can actually see the, the state, the financial health of the other two, sewer and water, the top two, are more an indicator of the growth of both of those areas.
But Lawrence made a good comment earlier about the capacity, I would need to look into that too.
Alright, talking about reserves. Uh, the city has four major sources of capital reserves. We're going to start at the very, very top because they all have restrictions, because restrictions are fun. So from the top, you are looking at your capacity reserve. This is a fund set aside for large projects that the operating budget just isn't set to handle in that moment. Six Mile Creek was one of the ones that were funded by this reserve funds in the most recent past. Next one down is probably the most complicated, that is your wastewater reserve. That is an agreement between the city of Casey and its purchasers, Town of Lexington and the Joint Municipal Water Sewer Commission. That is money that has to be spent only on improvements related to the wastewater plant and nothing more. And that is pursuant to that agreement that we signed with them. The bottom two, because they always get funded together, look very pretty. Um, but those two are actually funded by the budget, that is your capital reserve and your capital equipment reserve fund. Those two are set aside for kind of the everything else's. So your capital equipment reserve, those are going to be your large equipment, equipment purchases that you need now and can't really wait until a budget period maybe asked for. Your capital reserve at the very bottom is also approved through the budget. Those are going to be necessary repairs, construction costs to the water distribution facility, the wastewater collection facility, example, you're going to rehab pumps, or you need to purchase a large pump. Or, um, hydrant, hydrants need to re- be replaced would be another example of that. Or, um, hydrant, hydrants need to be replaced would be another example of those. Though, those can come out of that instead of affecting the operating budget. Also, just as a side note, the utilities, even though they're unrestricted net position, is not necessarily the full story of its financial health, 'cause you have to account for reserves. We did finish FY twenty-three with an unrestricted net position of four point two million. And that is healthy for the utility fund. Total reserves for the utility fund at the end of twenty twenty-three was eleven point seven million, which is approximately fifty-one percent of annual operating expenses.
Kelly, are any dividends and investments and interest made off of the restricted funds also restricted?
Correct, yes.
But, but thanks to her moving us from banks a couple of years ago, we are actually making some.
Yeah.
We were not prior to that.
You're talking about a lot of money during the time that we can do stuff.
I'm excited about how much money's coming in in interest rates.
Yeah.
Good question, yes.
But that's all I have to.
That was.
Oh, that's a good time.
Sorry.
Can we go back to slide one there?
I don't know, fine slide one.
Well, and you asked if you could get the, I, I think that she did such a good job with them. They are actually self-explanatory on their own, so happy to share them.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, I'll turn around and kinda look at that screen or something, but I'd like to be able to kinda show them.
I think she describes them all, but they also do stand on their own with really good information, so.
Recording is online too, so we can go back to it.
Well, you can't see the audio, you can't see the slides, but you'll hear the audio, so.
I tried to warn them, you can't tell an accountant, uh, that they need analytics. We're all gonna go nuts.
We did trip a little.
They had to trip.
This is a really good presentation.
She did a great job.
Thank you.
Really good presentation.
I'm an introvert. Can I go back to hiding in my.
You didn't sound like it just now. You don't get to play that anymore.
I wanna go hide.
That was excellent.
Yours is ease and, um, comical, so you're good.
Alright, well, we, yeah, you said we have part four.
Well, I just don't know, we need to redo this, so up to you.
That's, um, that's perfect timing. Thank, no, no, you ended up perfectly, thank you. So, but do you think we need to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, call on a question.
Mayor for Tim James.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Sock.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, thank you so much.